All right, welcome. Today is September 11th, 2023. It is now 5:00 PM. My name is John Lake, Supervisor with the DEM Division of Marine Fisheries. I'm here tonight to officiate this hearing regarding proposed amendments through Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Regulations on behalf of Acting DEM Director Terry Gray. With me today from the Division of Marine Fisheries are Nicole Costa, Peter Duhamel, and Scott Olszewski. Tonight's hearing concerns several proposed amendments which were publicly noticed on August 23rd, 2023. Pursued to procedural requirements of the Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42-35 Administrative Procedures, and the Office of Rhode Island Secretary of State under the authority of Rhode Island General Laws, Chapters 42-17.1. The purpose of this hearing is to afford interested parties an opportunity to provide oral testimony, data, opinions, and/or arguments concerning the proposed rulemaking. Please be advised that this hearing is being recorded and will be made available on the Division's website tomorrow. For tonight's hearing, the following process will be observed. The Division will provide a PowerPoint presentation summarizing each of the main proposals. Persons willing, wishing to speak must raise their hands and be recognized by the Hearing Officer prior to speaking. Speakers must first state their name and/or affiliation for the record. And just so y'all know, we will do the people in person first, and then we'll go to the Zoom. This hearing is not a forum for discussion, debating, arguing, or otherwise having any other dialogue. Any questions must be limited to clarifying questions only. A second comment may only be made after all other speakers have had the opportunity to speak. Once oral comments are complete, the hearing will conclude. Written comments are strongly encouraged and may be submitted until the end of the notice comment period, which is Thursday, September 21st. Division staff are available to answer questions regarding any of the proposals. I just want to hammer that home because we do have a very complicated matter on the hearing tonight, which is the multi-purpose vessel license. Feel free to contact any of us if you feel like you need more information to make your comment or have any really in-depth questions about the license. We're all available to speak about. The record of this public hearing and comments will be provided to the Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council for their consideration at their meeting on October 2nd, at which time the council will have, will provide a recommendation to the director on each item. After the comment period is closed and the council meeting has taken place, the director will render his final decisions. The director has the option to file the rules and regulations with the Secretary of State as noticed, file the rules and regulations with minor changes, or not file the rule and consider re-noticing with or without additional amendments. If filed, these rules and regulations become effective 20 days after filing and have the effect of law. Prior to hearing comments, the following exhibits are noted for the record. Exhibit one is a copy of the PowerPoints, uh, sorry, uh, sorry. Exhibit one is a copy of the public notices and proposed regulations that were filed with Secretary of State on August 23rd. Exhibit two is a copy of the slides presented at tonight's hearing. As to, as of this date, no written comments have been submitted. So without further ado, let's go to our slides. All right, so the first item up for comment is part of our Part 7 Dealer Regulations for TATAG Tagging. This rule, uh, it will, this rule is basically closing a loophole. We right now have this already in our Part 3 Fisher, for fishermen to have each TATAG tagged. Uh, it is not in our dealer reg. This just closes that loop, requiring dealers to buy tagged fish. Any comments on our TATAG Tag, TATAG Tagging Amendment? Sorry, proposal. Got them all a little marbles, thank you. Anyone on Zoom? All right, we'll move on. Uh, the second one is also a part of Part 7, our Dealer Regulations, and this concerns summer flounder packaging requirements. This was a proposal by industry to remove the rule that, that fluke must be packed in either a standard 60 or 100-pound carton. Uh, industry suggested that we, uh, that we get rid of the rule, and, uh, we are proposing to delete the section that fluke must be packed in these specific boxes. Any comment on the fluke boxing? Anyone on Zoom? All right, moving on, uh, again, in Part 7, our Dealer Regulations, the strike bass finning requirement. We are proposing to delete the section that, uh, prohibits dealers from purchasing any strike bass that has a right pectoral fin removed. And the reasoning here is, right now, there is no overlap with recreational and commercial size limits for strike bass, so this rule is not necessary. If it does come back into play, we will propose it again. Any comment on strike bass fitting? Anyone on Zoom? All right, so the next one is, uh, in Part 2, and this is, uh, the endorsement for species other than finfish, shellfish, and crustacean. So this is basically codifying a practice that has kind of been in place informally. Basically, when you want to, to harvest and sell a species that is not, uh, part of our three traditional sectors, uh, there was no species endorsement for it. So what we are doing is make, is adding any marine species other than shellfish and crustacean are finfish endorsements, both limited and unlimited. Uh, so if you wanted to buy, if you wanted to harvest and sell kelp or echinoderms, you would simply get a finfish. It'd be covered with your finfish endorsement. Any comments on the endorsement for species other than finfish, shellfish, or crustacean? Anyone on Zoom? Next, uh, next item is the issuance, it's part of Part 2, issuance of mid-water paratral endorsements. Uh, so we are amending our rule to specify that there is no issuance of the mid-water paratral endorsement until further notice. Uh, this is just to clear up any confusion. Right now, mid-water paratrolling is not, uh, allowed in state waters, so there's no need to sell this endorsement. Any comments on the mid-water paratral endorsement? Ben? If, so, yeah, to clarify, if the federal rule changes, the Division does have the, uh, it is, it is up to us, well, it is up to the state to determine whether paratrolling will be allowed again. It is in our regs. However, it would be an item of special needs. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, thanks for getting into some of the more, uh, substantial items here. The first one is our exit-entry ratio for unlimited finfish endorsement. This is the endorsement that allows you to catch restricted species. Right now, the Division issues licenses as part of an exit-entry ratio. That ratio now is one license out, one license in. Uh, we have had a proposal to, uh, to change it to two to one in. Uh, so we have two, basically two proposals out for comment. One is status quo, which is one to one. Under this ratio, 33 new endorsements would be issued in 2024. Under the two-out-one-in proposal, 18 endorsements would be available for issuance in 2024. Any comments on the unlimited, the exit-entry ratio for unlimited finfish endorsement? Go to Ken.
Ken Booth, Rhode Island Commercial and Marine. With the uncertainty in some of the issues, looking at, um, substantial cutbacks on quotas, uh, according to the rules, I would look at, uh, the second option, the two to one, um, to reduce the effort until this industry stabilizes a little bit, find out where we, where we are. Thank you.
Patrick?
Patrick, definitely a commercial fishing. I don't really have a hold on either one or two, but I think it's a little insulting that the Division is standing out licenses that can land strike bass, and I own the license, and I can't land a strike bass because I'm a gill netting. So before they start issuing out new licenses that can attack strike bass, they should maybe hook in the, land the gill net vessels, keep strikers, saying that there's too many people that are going after the float up. So maybe the new licenses cannot, for the first couple of years, cannot land strike bass, cannot land, uh, the high, the high topic items that, well, let's talk, uh, blue sea bass. I just think it's insulting that they're handing these licenses out when we haven't even gotten to the issue at hand that the gill net guys, there's only a handful of us left in the state of Rhode Island, can't land strikers. But every one of these licenses you hand out is going to land strikers. On my second hand, I think there should be some type of thing up there for the way that they're giving them out to people. I think anyone under the age of 30 should be first in line to get one of these licenses because there's no one doing it. There's no one who, I've known people who sold their licenses, and then they went in and got, in a lottery and got a new license. That's insulting to me that they sold their license, made a, grew very good crop market, and then when they got one of these licenses, same thing with the ones that are over 65. I don't think that you sell your state license. You should not be, you should have to buy them or not go in the water, these companies. That's a little insulting to the people that are fishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
It just came in, but, yes, I'm in favor of the two to one. Um, I see a ton of licenses getting issued, um, with restrictions coming in to play. Uh, we have to look at those restrictions first. You know, I think, again, the most important thing that we're looking to do here is making sure that, again, Galley is the best commercial port for Rhode Islanders and anglers and residents from Rhode Island.
Thank you. Can you state your name for the record?
Rick Wilmot, LVMN.
Thanks, Rick. Any comments on Zoom for, uh, exit-entry ratio for unlimited finfish? Ben?
I'd like to add one more thing. If the licenses do go to the vessels, and one of these cannot go right out of the vessel, right out of the gate.
Just to clarify, these are for a resident standard license, which could not be converted to a multi-purpose vessel, so, okay. All right. Thank you for the comments. Moving on. So similar to finfish, we issue, uh, unlimited shellfish endorsements through a exit-entry ratio. Uh, we have two proposals. One is status quo, which is one in, I mean, one out, one in. And the other one is for a three-to-one ratio, three out, one in. Uh, just a little background information here. We did have a large number of shellfish licenses that, uh, exit the system due to a change in the fee structure. So, uh, at one to one, we would have 138 new, uh, new unlimited shellfish licenses issued. At three to one, we would have 48 unlimited shellfish endorsements issued. Any comments on exit-entry ratio for unlimited shellfish? Ben?
Have they, uh, comms still considered this on this license? Because I know that was a big problem for all the shellfish guys.
So that was one of the big changes. We had, uh, so we used to have endorsements for each of the shellfish species. They've all been, they've all been combined into either unlimited and limited. Unlimited is softshell clam, whelk, cohog, and the rest are part of the limited. But unlimited can harvest all of the limited species, basically harvest all the shellfish, including whale.
Well, that may be a, a ratio.
Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so the next matter is also part of Part 2, and this is, uh, for the prioritization for the issuance of new licenses endorsements. Uh, this is for military service and apprenticeship programs. So our proposed rule is to add a third priority category, which would, uh, which would consider, uh, residents that are active members of the military, military veterans who have been honorably discharged, or a person that holds a valid certificate from an accredited commercial fishing apprenticeship program which has been approved by the department. We would then move the third and fourth categories down appropriately. And just by way of background here, uh, this is actually stipulated in Rhode Island General Law, so we are just codifying what the law is instructing us to do. Any comments on the prioritization of issuance for new licensing endorsements relative to military service and the apprenticeship program?
We have an apprenticeship program for kids. Have we got one of those in Rhode Island yet?
I don't know of any age limits on these apprenticeship programs. I'm almost aware of two of them.
18 years old.
Well, that's, that's our, uh...
That's a military woman, but I'm just curious about apprenticeship. Is there an apprenticeship program for kids under the age of 18 that want to get into fishing?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Those are just our rules for issuing the, the final priority categories. You have to be 18 to be in them.
Right. I agree, they should go. The priorities are fine. I'd be, uh, I'd really like to see something for, you know, kids that are early 15. You know, I saw a fish in most, well, thirteen, so. You have to bring them a four, actually, I have to bring them a four card and make state licenses.
Yeah, thank you for calling. Any other comments on the prioritization? Anyone on Zoom?
I said, sorry. Uh, Dave Bethany, Cardinal Fisheries Research Foundation. So this, this make it a separate priority from having commercial fishing experience, so it doesn't get added to someone that might have faulted? How does that work?
Yeah, so, uh, our prioritization schemes, uh, the first two tiers are based on participation in the fisheries, whether you're in the same sector fishery or in a different sector. And then, uh, so basically, the first tier involves participating either in the same sector or in an, with an unlimited, you have an unlimited endorsement and, from another, from another fishery, or you're a crew member who is participating in the same fishery. Then the second tier kicks down to, uh, people who are on a limited endorsement participating in another fishery, or a crew who are participating in another, in another sector of the fishery. So this would come after that. Currently, it would go to a resident lottery. This is proposing to add, um, to add the, a third priority, uh, based on, this was guidance we got from our license restructure from the, from the, uh, general law that they, that the legislature wanted to see some consideration for military members and apprenticeship programs.
So if you were, if you're a commercial fisherman that went through the apprenticeship program, that doesn't push you ahead of other commercial fishermen that never went through the program or served in the military?
It would only put you ahead of other commercial fishermen if they were, if they were only going to be, uh, qualifying for a resident state lottery. If they had more time in the other categories, those two categories still take precedence always. Anyone on Zoom? Uh, next one, uh, next slide. Next one is part of Part 2 as well, and this is, uh, concerning the appeal of license renewal application denials due to medical hardship. So this is a rule in our licensing that was created back when we had the big change in 2003. It's no longer necessary. It basically singles out if you missed the application deadline due to, uh, medical hardship, that you can go to AAD to appeal, to appeal that, why you missed the deadline. You can go to AAD with any of, any of these type of, uh, issues, not just your application being late. So this is not a necessary rule. It was basically a clarifying. Any, uh, comments on the, uh, application, sorry, appeal of license renewal application due to medical hardship? Anyone on Zoom? All right. So the last, uh, item up for comment is our multi, multi-purpose vessel license, the MVL. And, uh, by way of background, I know a lot of folks here are well aware of the program. We've had, uh, multiple workshops, hearing, and council meeting, uh, concerning this. Uh, the details of the program are quite lengthy, and they are in the, uh, public notice. We're not going to go through all the nitty-gritty details now. Uh, the basic, uh, the basics things to know are that we have three proposals on the table. Proposal one is a division proposal that has been modified with input from the legislature, uh, industry, as well as, uh, guidance that we received at workshop. Proposal two is a, uh, so proposal one is a proposal that basically has a, a, uh, pilot phase program, a pilot approach to it. The, the license would be active for two years, and then it would expire, and it would be up, up to, uh, the Division to bring it up again, to have it go forward in perpetuity. Uh, based on guidance, we would, it would only allow for 15 licenses to be issued, and those would be issued via a lottery. Um, into, uh, proposal two is an industry proposal. Uh, it basically says no licenses should be issued, no multi-purpose vessel licenses should be issued indefinitely. Uh, proposal three is an industry proposal, which proposes that 70 licenses be issued, and there is no sunset period, so it would be in perpetuity. Uh, some of the basics here are this, this license would only, so the basic of this program is a multi-purpose license issued to a person can be, can be consigned to the apartment, the department, and the department would then issue that person a multi-purpose vessel, uh, license for the vessel that they own. Uh, so it's only available to a resident national, natural person who holds a multi-purpose fishing license. You'd have to have a state-approved VMS device on your vessel. Uh, operators would have to, operators would have to have an operator permit, which we propose a fee of $50 for. And the licenses subject, uh, licenses would be subject to the application period and renewed annual. So if the Division proposal with the two years, each year you still have to re-up the license. It's just after two years, the license is basically being reconsidered again. Um, for more details of the, of the, uh, of the program, please, please feel free to see the packet. So with that, any comments on the multi-purpose vessel license? Yeah?
Thank you. I, I'm working off the data sheet that was attached to the meeting announcement later. So the wording in this may not be the same with the regulations, so I just, if I say something that's covered, uh, it's, but I'm wrong off of this, not the actual regulation.
Sure.
I guess, right?
This, I was so...
I would, um, through the concerns that have been vocal on before, I think part of it is that the fishing industry appears to be in a reasonable flux at this point. A lot of changes going on, and a lot of effects on the industry itself. So I'd be very cautious about making a change like this without a full analysis of the implications on it, because there are going to be winners and losers in this. And I don't know that if the state has decided that, then that's okay, but let's talk about it and figure out who they're going to be so people can plan it. Um, with that in mind, I would go with, uh, recommend proposal number two, prohibit it indefinitely until a comprehensive study is done, analysis of everybody. I know there's been a lot of workshops, a lot of meetings. Unfortunately, you know, Pat Knight and the only attendees are the number of them. A lot of people keeping their head in the sand, don't understand it. Uh, communication's always an issue. So I'd recommend proposal number two. However, if the director decides to move forward with this, um, the proposal number one, I would recommend these follow additions to it. And they may exist in the regulation, not in the, in the printed sheet here, but if they don't, it would say that no one would be able, you would have to have owned the multi-purpose license in your name for a three to five-year period prior to converting it over to multi-vessel license. That would prevent somebody in a short period of time accumulating licenses just to have a better chance in a lottery. And then not to say that couldn't happen. So somebody should have to have, have a license for X period of time with activity on it to be able to move it over. Um... The other issue, and again, in this part, it doesn't refer to it as a pilot program which ends in two years with analysis. It calls it during the initial two-year period. So it gives the implication that it's going to continue with just the initial two-year period. So I would recommend that there be direct language which says it's a two-year pilot program which will end, upon which time the department will do an analysis of it, and then it will come back up as to whether it's worth continuing or not. And I say that because there will be arguments from people, discussions of people that have participated in it, claiming they have a grandfather right to go forward, and the pressure will be on politically to follow through with that. And it may not be in the best interest, but will end up being stuck with it. So I, I suggest that there's language definitively that says it ends, and you do an analysis. Um, and then the review, um, the others that, uh, the department will review it, I would set up the review criteria ahead of time, because I think it's important that financial information's included in this, because the implications of it, uh, could affect the revenue to all fishermen involved in the port. And in imbalance in one direction or another would affect the... And I think it's important that that comes into the review process, so the participants in this program understand that they don't have a right to say, "No, you can't have it." I think that's, in order for the department to do a thorough analysis, you're going to need that. So those are, those are my comments on the existing, uh, proposal, if, if it was chosen that way.
Thanks, Ken. I can tell you that it is clear that, uh, the, the term of the program would end December 31st, 2026. Sorry, so that's like, I didn't see that yet, but thank you. Rick?
So again, I'm for number two. But again, number one is proposed. As Ken mentioned, a little bit more stern on the time front. I'd like to see at least that license, multi-purpose license, we give it an answer of at least five years. What that's going to prevent is from somebody who out there, and again, gather multi-purpose licenses, put them on individuals, and then we become dominant. You can gain a tremendous amount of vessels, um, and do a lot with control of what's going on in the fishing industry. So I would say five, at least five years, you have to hold that license, thank you.
And you might say your name again for the...
Yeah, Rick Wilmot.
Thank you. Anyone else for multi-purpose? Uh, Patrick?
Patrick, definitely. It's a very slippery slope that is playing this game, because we're going around and around. I could be a winner, I could be a loser. I mean, we haven't even figured out a vessel landing permit. So this is giving the vessels a right to go land in fishing state waters. When we read the proposal is to land offshore vessel to land in the state of Rhode Island, but they couldn't get captains to run a state, they couldn't get captains to run this, uh, they need a residential landing permit to land restricted finfish fisheries. I'm going to correct this. That's how, that's how this whole thing came about. Now it's a multi-purpose license. Multi-purpose license gives everyone the right to fish in state waters, which I could be a little, I could be a slippery slope. If it was going to be winners, it's going to be losers. So I mean, I could be a winner of this the way it's looking at right now. Well, the only thing that I'm, the only thing that I'm very curious probably is the vessel license, so a person, I own my, I can put my state license on this vessel. So now if somebody else owns the license, can owns a license. Right? He owns a license, but he doesn't own the boat. How does that go? Because now you're trying to say you have to have the license for five years. People are trying to say they want a criteria. And then with the license for five years. If you were a grow, if you're a fisherman in this whole industry and you're building your business up, I own a boat that I haven't owned for five years. So now these license, uh, these licensed people that have had the boat issued to them for five years, they've had a heck, well, the boat for five years and a license. So that's a kind of a slippery slope. Well, theiness is a little requirement. I like that. The operation, the operator's permit, it's $50 for the operator's permit. Sorry, that should be free, but now sanctions and violations are still going to the vessel, the operator, and the incorporation that owns it? Is that how we're doing? Is that, is, I'm just making sure my language is clear.
Yeah, sure to clarify, uh, if any violations that it is in the rule would go against the operator and the owner of the vessel, be it, it'd go against the vessel as well. So if there's, so if you have to, so if your license gets suspended, your operator, your operator would have his permit suspended. Your multi-purpose vessel would be suspended too, so the boat could...
So it's co-signing that, that.
Yes.
So we're, we're doing that. The other thing is, is the pilot program, two years, the Division would step in after year number one and say, "Well, this thing is not working." Pump the brakes, stop it. And right there, you got three proposals, right? There you got zero, which I think this thing is going forward. Number one, the 15 licenses. Now you're going to have a lot of turmoil with people with 15 licenses, because I participated in one of the, the fluke gathering. I was one of the chosen ones when there was only a couple of people that were allowed to do it, and I even went on fistfights in the department office there. So if it's good for the pools, it's good for the gas. If it's going to go, when everyone participates, whoever wants to do it, let them participate, and then you'll see a real, these pilot programs, just like what happened with the last blue and seabass pilot program, it was going great. Now all of a sudden, who got kicked off of it? And people were fighting and arguing over, I mean, I think if you have a right, who's going to be the one? The, uh, lottery system doesn't... I don't think it should be 70 votes. It should be, it's either good or it's not. Because you're going to have hard feelings. You're going to have a lot of hard people, you're going to have harsh people. And then you're going to have other people. Look at a perfect example of what happened with the pilot program that's going on right now. We put notice in it and then it was open to anybody. And I don't think, it might be 20 more participants over the course of things, because some people don't want to be in this on the boat. I don't care, they can track. Doesn't bother me one bit, you know? I think it should be a requirement, all state licenses have VMS in my eyes. But that's us, uh, that's us on me, but I mean, I just, I just don't want to see certain people win in front of me. If we're going to swing the sword and take a swing at this and playing the game with it. Everyone should have a participant, everyone should be able to participate in it. The only thing that I'm very offended with is, well, personally myself, who owns a couple boats and have that boat to have federal permits and state licensed vessels. And there's no way I can fall. There's no, I lose each week. I can, if I put my state license on a boat, am I going to be able to issue myself another state license so I can go fish my federal boat and land it in state waters? Am I going to be a, I haven't seen any wording on this. Are we going to be allowed to get it up? Are we going to be allowed to get a landing permit? Because right now I can't have a landing permit and a state license. Two people can own. So seeing I put it to the boat, but essentially I still own the state license. Right? And it's still like registered to me, even though we've given it to the division. And the vision says, okay, this is going, you know, go the cell, I'm our, this is my personal boat. Am I going to be able to go get a landing permit to go fish by vessel reaper?
The same rules would apply, so you can only have one license to an added person.
So in my eyes, this is a in my eyes, there has to be a way that something like this has to go on. We've got the perfect example. You fish in state waters and you get hurt. No one can take your boat if they don't have a state license. So yes, something like this has to happen, but I think there should be a little more accountability for the owners. And the other big thing about this is you lose your lot, the state water blocks the allocation if you decide to put your license on the vessel, correct?
So based on feedback at the workshop, uh, no, we we took out any stipulation with the with LTAs. LTA would still be a part of the license as it is now. Uh, owner operator rules still apply though, so you couldn't fish your your state pots in, uh.
Kind of a little loss on the owner. How is the owner operator still in, it's going to the vessel?
If you're, if you're setting your pots off your multipurpose vessel, the owner of the vessel has to be the operator and has to be hauling those pots, so. So we're not saying that your your LTA would disappear, it'd still be there, but you couldn't have someone, you couldn't hire someone to run your multipurpose vessel boat to go haul your pots. You'd have to go haul in state waters.
Now, as owner operators, we have first preference with this?
Uh, there's no, just to clarify, no, there's no rules, uh, right? Be a random draw.
I'm just saying, I think it should be, I think it should be number four now. That it shouldn't be that anybody, it's good for the pools, it's good for the game there. I mean, I hate to say, I hate to say it, but I mean, I could, I could be a winner. Um, I could be a winner, but that's by really, I don't know, I, or I could be a loser, I don't know. No, it's a lot of, I'm going to try and think about this because it will be young kids in. It could get a young kid in because I could let somebody take my boat and go fish, which is all right. But I'm very skeptical of what these other guys are saying as well. And so all of a sudden, you know, a big, a big conglomerate comes in which looking right now. Every time they open up the IP, Blue Harvest went on there. All these other companies keep going on there, but they have to be a US six, right?
You have to be a Rhode Island resident.
The vessel has to be owned by a Rhode Island resident?
The license holder, the multi, if you have a multipurpose license, you must be a Rhode Island resident. So if you take that natural person that's taking that license.
Yeah, I understand. Well, what I'm saying is this that person takes their license, the vessel is owned by foreign company. They put their state license on that ship. Has to be Rhode Island. I thought it was supposed to be only Rhode Island based.
That's right.
Is that definitely so written in there?
That is right, yeah. Rhode Island based corporation.
Not incorporated. What a boat is from.
Uh, I'm not supposed to get into nitty gritty here, but, uh, so, but, but yeah, I could talk to you about later, but yeah, it is, it is a Rhode Island based, uh, it's supposed to be a person, but that person can be part of a Rhode Island based corporation. One of the ownership or leadership of that corporation and transfer that.
So maybe backing on there, maybe that corporation should have been here for a lot longer than the state license. That's just the one thing that I'm just saying is because I can, we can start a corporation about, I can make a very long talk. Make a Rhode Island based corporation and not a lot.
John?
Um, we, we have someone on the Zoom and also I just wanted to make a point of clarification. So the division proposal is for three years, so December 31st, 2026 is actually three years. There was a mistake in the rule summary that said two years. Okay. Um, so it's three years, but we anticipate it will get revisited every year. Um, so you could comment that you like two years better, you like three years, but just wanted to point that out. Our proposal is for three years. And we do have, um, someone on Zoom.
Yep, we'll go to Zoom then.
Uh, Godhead Katie?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, KDL Meter from the Town Doc, and we are in support of proposal three, uh, the industry proposal for the multipurpose vessel license. Um, I've attended pretty much all of the public hearings for, um, for this subject. Um, and even the extra meetings that we pulled together to meet with um, people from the industry who had concerns um, about this particular license. So, um, I feel like everyone should kind of be up to speed with this now and we had the chance to kind of ask questions and concerns and answers. Um, so we, you know, clarified what this license, what we wanted to see this license do and not do. Um, so, um, we are still in favor of this proposal. Uh, we will be writing comments. Um, I will write one on behalf of the Town Doc and we'll submit it in, um, by next week. Um, but it would be a great thing for the port and the state, um, if we can get this passed, it would give us the flexibility that this industry needs. This industry is always in flux from year to year. Um, that's, that's nothing new. Um, we have an issue that everyone knows, the grain and the fleet. This is going to allow people to be able to choose who runs their boats, uh, no matter where they live. Um, and that's great from a safety, um, from a safety aspect. And, um, again, the grain and the fleet aspect. So, um, again, we are in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have a question.
Sure.
John, um, so there's lots of talk about wanting analysis for this program. Um, we, I believe it was, was it, um, uh, did Jason McNamee say there already was a white paper out about this a couple of years ago? I think, yeah, he mentioned that a couple of times, that we've already had this analysis out, analysis out for a couple of years. Is there any way we, is it published somewhere that people can access this and actually read it? Um, to understand this program?
You know, Katie, it might be on our website. If not, I can, uh, I have it posted there for sure.
Okay, I I just, but I just wanted to reiterate that it has been brought up several times that there already has been a paper on this. Um, so I don't think there's a need to go ahead and start and redo all that analysis. It's already been done. The information is out there, um, and it would be great if people, you know, if it's easy for people to access, if they haven't already reached out to DEM to to read it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
I'll go to Ken then, Rick. Okay, John, I've passed comment. Um, I agree on on the corporate issue because it's, uh, there were always lawyers smarter than the one we have hired, we think. And, uh, you know, Rhode Island based corporation, the Blue Harvest could start register corporation in a month and now they're Rhode Island based with a sub corporation of theirs. So there's a way around all of that. So I think it's important, if you have to have been a corporation, but registered around for five, six, seven years or whatever, because this whole concept of of that's come up is to solve a problem. And I don't, we don't really know what the problem is. Because there really isn't. The problem for some people maybe, but to protect the unintended consequences of this, that's why I think it's important to definitively have that dead period where it ends and then the review and the analysis. Now, underway, I know there's a white paper, nothing really in depth analysis, yeah, other than this could happen. This would go forward. From a scientific standpoint, a business standpoint, I saw a very weak on any substantial justification for it. But I think at the end of this, there's a good analysis because as Pat said, he doesn't, he could be one of the winners. He doesn't want to be one of the losers. But there are going to be winners and losers. And there's a bunch of guys out there fishing today. They're going to be losers. They don't even know it yet. And I think that's important. If the state has a plan for that, then that's okay. Tell the guys, you're going to be a loser. Don't invest any more money. I know one, you just bought a 42 foot boat. You're balancing on the edge here. Because you're going to, you're probably going to be a loser. But that's why I think we've got comprehensive study, economic development, because the port's a big deal in Rhode Island. We should see what's going on down in the bed bed with the tank. And so to stay away from that, those unintended consequences, instead of walking down that street in two or three years saying, oh, my God, what happened? That's my point.
Thanks, Ken. Rick?
Yeah, Rick, one more. So again, we can base something on level of license visal, we've got 15 that numbers 70. If I come in and open up a corporation tomorrow, words like that, I'd like to do very easily. I purchased 70 boats. Then I get 70 licenses, multi purpose individuals. And I move all those licenses to those 70 boats.
They own, they own, they own a lot of it.
Let's just say I get 20. In a lot of, let's just say I get 20 or 10. But let's say I just open up 20 corporations. So I'm not dominating this one thing. This is what I mean about power. Power comes in and power takes over money to us and everybody else is out the door. My number two question is, we've all been to the Florida Galway. You're going to be able to put 20 more fishing vessels in that block? We're going to return the yard. Right now, the small boat industry, 25 feet number may have a half a percent of the dockage in Galway. He's a commercial fisher. Got it. Male, female, younger generation coming in. I mean, I'm a tail end out, but you want this younger generation to come in. Really? We have less than half a percent of the dockage for 25 foot boats running. And I know that the director of ports working very hard to try to get a balance. It's not easy. These boats that are not fishing, they've not been fishing for two years, three years, four years, five years, and we can't get them. So when you start opening things up to a big number, you start getting these corporations and money involved. You know? I don't think people have seen Louisiana and some of these Savannah and some of these parts where insurance boats get in. You know, a little bit happening in that. But that money comes in, they get the boats. And then they get the license, and then they get all these corporations. The next thing you know, they dominate. And then now, what do they dominate that and control the vice officials?
Thanks. Anyone else on Zoom? All right. So that's our, that's our last slide for comment. And, uh, so since there are no further comments, we presented at this time on behalf of the Department of Environmental Management, I'd like to thank you all for attending and for your comments. At this time, I declare this public hearing to be closed. Again, please be reminded that the public comment period will conclude at 4:00 PM on Thursday, September 21st. And that the division staff are available at any time to discuss, uh, the proposed rules in order to assist you making your talk. So feel free to reach out. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.